... my tenant?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Board meeting in March 10. This is a reminder, this is emergency meeting, we're in a building. Please go to your vehicles, please do not leave until directed by emergency service personnel. Also, if you are smoking, please take your hat off to the back of the building. I have those questions.
Yes, good evening, everybody. First, a board meeting in minutes approval for February 24, 2014, please.
Motion to accept, present.
I have a bit on page six. But every down from my report. First time system make sense, even for me. In this respect, we're getting for the snow. I'm not to show you back and forth, but I'm sure.
Well, that's how you said it, though.
That's how she heard, I'm sure.
Okay. I actually don't speak English.
So we're good?
No, no, they were to check this itself.
With respect, with respect, maybe? With respect to the snow.
What a wonderful job DPW does on the puddles and stuff. Maybe we move a little stone. I don't know what I said, I got to be honest.
All right, maybe you can talk with Deputy Burke down.
Do we have the changes to the additions? Motion to accept. Motion, second. Second, favorit?
Aye.
Treasurer's report tonight. Bills for the period total $325,461.71. Top five: PSEG Long Island, $19,422.61 for electric. Parkland asphalt, $18,820 for supply and installation of the signs. H2M, $12,767.19 engineering to replace and extend sewer lines.
We don't have to check for you yet.
Palace Electric, $12,457.51 for wiring in the basement and the attic of Village Hall. And Drive Train, $12,381.11 for repairs to sewer vehicles. Totaling $75,048.42. If I can have approval, please.
Motion to accept, present. Motion, second. Favorit? Aye, aye, it's okay.
And I do have one addition that's not on the agenda. Requesting approval to transfer $162,000 from surplus to the general fund to cover the cost of the generators at all village facilities.
Motion, motion, second. Second. Favorit? Aye. Okay. We've talked over the course of the last two years, at least two years, about the searing of the area down in River Avenue, Sunset Price, Maves, and the problems that those residents have down that area down there. And then we have received a grant from the state for a million dollars. We have between some bonding that we'll do and reserves that we have and the sewer fund, $800,000 more. And we received a $528,000, $16,000?
$78,000.
$578,000 grant from the county to do the individual property hookups to those homes down there. So the homeowners will not have the cost of the hookups. And that was supplied by the county through their sewer surplus. Whatever they had some sort of program, but we're in it again. What we needed to do that project. What I asked was for H2M Frank Russo and Greg?
Levasse.
Levasse. Levasse. To come this evening and give us an update. And to explain to the public and to explain to the board what the process is, what the project, the length of time, when we expect to start, but a bit to go out and sort of look. Frank?
Sure.
The stage is yours.
Yep. Thank you for having me here today, us here. I just want to point out that I'm celebrating 30 years of being the sanitary engineer for the village of Patroy. So I'm a...
Number one, number two.
I'm just a little boy.
Does he want to go here more than me?
I don't think so. The whole project actually started in 2003 when Riverview came in and they asked for sewer connection. They paid for mapping plan back in 2003. That connection hooked up Harbor Crab, the Blue Line, and Riverview. What we did was we did a mapping plan that assumed that that whole peninsula was going to be sewered. And we sized the lines for the future. Well, here we are, the future is here. And tonight we'll go into that project. So Riverview took it from Division and West down to Riverview. And then Fairfield heard about it and they said, I have a sewer street plan. I'd like it hooked up. And they paid for the subsequent connection down to Weeks.
Didn't we require the Riverview to put in the second line of that?
Yes, we did. We sure did. The whole plan was as projected back in 2003. We calculated the flow, we do it size pipes. And we just had everybody do what we said back in 2003. So Riverview came online January 2008. Fairfield came online July of 2012. And here we are. We're ready to bring it all the way down to the end of the road. And tonight, so that's in terms of introduction. Greg Levasse is the project manager. He'll go into some of the specifics, costs, schedule, that kind of thing. And we've got a two D's of setup here, so the public will see it.
Good evening. Just to introduce you to the project, give you oriente, orientage. Fairfield Properties location is here. We have Weeks Avenue, which is up here in Crescent Street. The blue line represents the dual three-inch low-pressure sewers that were extended by Fairfield on the bank. The pink line is the proposed three-inch dual sewers going down the service, Price, and Sunset Lanes. From the intersection of Price and River Avenue, it'll be single three-inch low-pressure sewer serving the area, reducing down to two-inch to maintain velocity of pipes. In all 55 properties encompassing this project, each property will be responsible for the installation of a low-pressure sewer grinder home station on the property. To orientate to the property, each oriente, orientage, the low-pressure sewer main is in the road. You got the home here, and this is the property line. So to take it from the flow, each home currently now is with a two-septic system. There's a trap on each house. So from the trap, we're going to intersect from the trap and divert the flow from the septic tank to the low-pressure sewer pump station, which we'll talk about the cost of installing the pump station later on. And from the pump station, the pump flow is diverted to the low-pressure sewer main in the street. And the property line, there's a curb stop to shut off flow with a check belt to prevent any waste flow from any other property flowing back to each resident's property. As well, on this project, after the part of this project, we also realized that there is numerous drainage issues in the area. So the villagers asked us to review the issues of the drainage areas. They're bonding on the intersection of Maves and Sunset Lane, as well as River and Sunset Lane. The different storm, waste water, the storm management conditions that we went through are not going to eliminate all the issues, but they will improve the drainage in the area. The only real way to improve the drainage in the area is to raise the road. But the storm drainage improvements that we are talking about is putting curbs, regrading the road, and putting underground storm chambers. Just to give you an idea of what's going to be in the roadway, here's the curve of the road. So we're going to put a porous concrete gutter system in so the water that's sitting on the road will drain through the ground into the underground storage chambers. These storm creek drainage are going to be pitched positively to catch pieces. So if they do clog, you'll still have drainage in the system. This is only going to hold flow at high-temperature. So as the water drains out, as the tide recedes, there'll be no storage in this collection system so it'll be ready for the next rain event at a high-tide condition. So we talked about the whole project. What's the cost to the homeowners in the area? I presented you guys all with your own spreadsheets. I set this up to reference column in column one. Columns one, two, three, and four go across. Column four is going to be the typical cost to River Avenue in a low-pressure single-family home. Column five represents the typical cost to an in-district low-pressure sewer connection. So the total project cost to this is going to be $2.35 million. That includes construction and engineering fees. When you take the grant that the village has received from Dazney with the $1 million grant, and the $1 million that the Patroy Sewer Fund is going to contribute to the project, the total debt service, which is line six, column three, to the homeowners in the area, is $50,000. When you equate that to a bond that the village is going to take out over 30 years at 3%, it equates to $18,000. So you say, what does that do to each homeowner? Well, you got to look at the project as a car. There's two components to the system. Yes, you got to purchase the car, which is your loan. And then you got the maintenance and the average gas that you got to use to fill up the car. So the annual sewer cost, you look at the sewer tax, which is based on the debt service and the actual usage of the sewer system. The cost of the whole sewer system for a typical low-pressure sewer resident is about $699, whereas if you're in district, because of the debt service to the whole district, you're looking at $770,000. So it's approximately $80 less a year for annual service. And then you got to look at the operation and maintenance costs for each property. It's going to be the same as any low-pressure sewer. You got the electrical usage, which is around $50 a year. And you have the sewer maintenance contract, which is required from Suffolk County Health Department to be purchased with the vendor of the actual pump system, which is additional $275. So you look at a total annual cost for a typical resident at River Avenue, $1,024 per year. Now we have to look at the total cost of the pump station and the equipment and the installation. Right now, you're looking at $10,500 per property to install, connect, have everything complete. Plus, you got to repurpose the existing. We talked to the health department about repurposing the existing septic system and bleaching systems to take on storm, the roof drainage runoff. The runoff is going to, the cost for the onsite runoff is about $1,250. So when you look at your total upfront costs for each individual owner on River Avenue, you're looking at approximately $1,250 upfront with the $10,500 grant that the village received from Suffolk County Sewer Fund. If Suffolk County Health Department does not allow us to go forward with repurposing the septic systems, each septic system will have to be abandoned as per health department requirements at a cost to the homeowner.
When will we know that?
We'll know that upon funding. We're submitting for final, final documents for approval by the health department next week. So when we look at the project right now, the project is going to the health department for review. We're being ready to bid that, this project, at the end of the month, beginning of April. So we're looking at a construction period of about 12 months for this project. We're going to go through the winter. And each property will have their homes disturbed at some point, putting in the road's drainage. But they'll always maintain access at the end of each day to the property. Do you have any questions?
Please, please. Yeah. Jerry. Each individual homeowner, it's an option for them, not a requirement for them to connect, right? They do not want to connect, they're not forced to, is that correct?
The thing about it is, Jerry, is they can get a one shot at the $10,000 for the hookup. It's not that we're going to sit and save this money for them. Somebody says they don't want to do it, then I'm going to spread that money amongst the rest of everybody else. You know?
So if they decide to find a hookup, it's not on their course.
It's an average course. So they, you know, if, you might have some courses that are $11,000. You might have some that are $9,000. So it's an average course. So that money is, I think, going to go into a pot. And there's going to be some arrangement where the village may be loaned the money to, or they...
Well, they...
But just to get an answer to that, although it might make sense for them to do.
If they don't...
It is an option, not an requirement, right? And not being forced to connect it anymore.
No, but down the road, if their system fails totally, it's going to cost them $10,000, $11,000 to do it down the road. So it's a decision they're going to have to make.
Right, so it is optional.
I'd hate to see, I'd hate to see anybody because this is an opportunity really to environmentally, to take care of a very impacted area. I think, Joe, you had spoken to some people.
Yeah, and ironically enough, there's some people down there who are pumping their pools probably four, five times a year. And then down the road, they tell us they haven't pumped at all. I don't know how that could be, blocked away, but that's what they say. So a bigger question for a while, and you touched on it a little bit, and I don't know how specific you can be, is obviously the drainage. You know, the floods that they see every day. I know you're making some kind of improvements. What kind of percentage can I tell people that it's going to be, you know?
The water will be off the road at the end of a high tide. Right now, we have enough volume in the system to handle a two-inch rainfall for an hour.
I mean, they're telling us there's still going to flood, but, you know...
But as the tide recedes, the storm water has positive drainage to follow the stream.
As opposed to it sitting there now for weeks.
So all the roads are going to be completely regraded, repitched for positive drainage. It's just during a high-tide condition, we're not going to be able to get the water out because of the tide and where we're discharged. So at the end of a high tide, as the tide recedes, roadway...
But they can expect to not have a two-week flood, right?
No, it's just the tide period, the initial tide period.
Are you still going to be doing the two retention areas that...
There will be one retention area at the property. Suffolk County owns two properties on Sunset Lane that will be used for additional retention in combination with the stormwater recharge. And those will overflow to a positive drainage out of the police stream as well.
So the property on the creek would be...
The town, this is dedicated to Parkline and the town of Portt Lake.
Do you think they want to let us go, Jack?
They would have to go through legislative sessions in the state. You get approval to convert and to allow us to do anything on that property.
That's true.
Yeah, it's possible.
So you're thinking maybe a full stop and then a full year of construction?
Yes. By the time we did it, awarded, get the shop drawings in.
So you just explain the flow of the waste that's going from the house into their pool and then being pumped. It's going to align, how's that connected down?
Currently, the waste water flow from the house flows through your septic tank. We're going to intersect the line from the septic tank and divert it to the low-pressure pump station. This pump station will then tie into the sewer main that we ran in the road, which is extended all the way to the village of Patroy Sewer.
So, yeah, their waste won't go into that tank?
No, we're going to bypass it. We're going to reconnect, we're going to try to repurpose the roof leaders to use their existing septic tanks, their stormwater runoff storage during rainfall then. Currently, right now, there's approximately 50% of the runoff on the road in this area is due to the roof and driveways in the area. So if we can catch that water before it hits the road, it'll reduce the flooding that much more, right?
And I just, can I ask you to repeat another thing? You talked about the cost of abandoning the roof, it has to...
The cost, the approximate, on average, cost of abandoning the pool is about $25,000. We're hoping the village will let us repurpose it, pump it out, and then tie in the roof leaders that way we can reduce the cost. We have a verbal approval from the health department. I don't think we still have anything, right?
Is that a pump, a maserated?
Yes, yes, it's a great pump.
And it's outside the house?
Yes.
In the ground?
Yep. It'll be a concrete ballast around the same as a pump.
Do they have to have generators for those?
They have a generator holdup for those. I know the village owns a standby generator that they periodically go around and pump them up during...
But if they lose their power?
It's a seven, we got a 70-gallon wet well in there. So you can flush them for a little while before it starts to back up. And you can hold up your regular portable generator.
If, if their connection, that's the beginning of this, that if the power is out for a period of time, that we can hook a generator up, that we run the whole system?
The whole system? No, it's each individual house you have to run.
So you have a portable generator, and it's a matter of going to each house?
There's no way?
Oh, there's a way, but of course, of course, no.
Wait.
Right, everything.
But it's got a 70-gallon.
You can tell you nothing.
Paul, it's got a 70-gallon.
And you figure wash them, you're just washing them.
A lot of showers, yeah, 70-gallon.
And in this area, they don't, they can't even shower and wash the dishes at the same time.
No, but I'm more concerned about the Hurricane Sandy kind of situation. It could be out for six or eight days. 70 gallons load up very quickly.
Very quick. Yeah, but they'll be evacuated.
The fault's probably 11 gallons.
Hold on, hold on. Excuse me? Just take a look at it and see what would be, if there was a master. I mean, even if we had to look down there occasionally, you know, if you go down. I just look at the Hurricane Sandy situation. You know, we were lucky, lucky. We had people that were out for 10 days. Then even if we had to go down there every two days and do the whole neighborhood.
Well, that's what, no, there is a generator hookup, each control panel.
Put you enough to do it, both 50 of them separate.
Yes, yes. So you want, you're looking at something where it's manifold, the system sounds out.
A central light box.
Right, a central box.
Okay, we'll look into it.
Just, we're big. You know, it's a reasonable number, it doesn't reason, you know.
A manner of box.
That's the cost of washing your entrance.
The engineering.
Water flows into Tunnels Creek. How is that filtered?
Like any, like the current storm water you have, current.
Can you explain it a little bit?
It's, there's no filtration system on it, so...
So it just goes right from the street into...
That's a toll free.
But it's...
But it has filters.
Yeah.
The job.
But our filters are going to be...
We have filters on our stormwater at the entry to the van?
The fat post?
Yeah, we have fat post.
Are we going to have those?
So we have that.
No, no, this is a whole different system. This system, explain this.
This, all right, let me go over it. Very normal conditions. As it rains, the road is pitched in storm creek gutter system. These are porous gutter systems. So the debris will stand up. The water will flow through the concrete, through the stone, into the storm chambers. The storm chambers will then flow to the toll free.
So there's no debris that we normally collect?
No, there would be none.
So then you don't need...
So it's filtering as it's going down?
It's filtering, yes.
And that whole gut is a filter?
The problem is that it's not filtering bacteria. It's not, you know, it's microscopic. So it'll filter solids. And you'll get, and you'll get accumulation of solids on top of this porous concrete.
Well, that would all be bad.
It has to be swept up. It has to be swept up. It has to be vacuumed out of the floor. Before we did this, we met with superintendent Dean and we went through the advantages and disadvantages. We would not have done this if the maintenance was an issue.
Would we have to buy new equipment to do those kinds of things?
I don't think so.
Compared by my old wood.
No, we should, we should also. Each panel is how much?
Each panel is, it's four feet long by 30 inches wide. If you got high areas of debris and it does clog up in the future, each panel is about $150 to replace. It can be replaced with a regular backup. There's nothing I hope on it. So the replacement of these is pretty quick and easy if they're in the end. If in the future, you can't clean it or they do start to build up into the break.
A lot of municipalities have gone this route. You're actually one of the first on the mountain doing this. It's an innovative way to green, it's considered green structure. So it's a nice way to protect the river and the creek.
Because we had hoped initially, we used that property that's considered portable. And they actually designed a sub-type system.
Yeah.
But with it being portable, it's going to cost us $250,000.
Right, exactly.
Initially rejected.
So instead of having the sun, which we just excavated, and there's a hole in the ground, we had to provide that same degree of storage underneath the road. And that's where the stormwater chambers come in. They're just polyethylene monsox, about the A-B-Y. Four people, I distribute them together, and they're all under the road. And that's where there's a void in there, and that's where you get your store. So, and then when the tide comes out, so does whatever's accumulated.
Can I just get one clarification on the county grant? Is that $578,000 just lumped into a pot of money and it could be divided among, you know, if there's three properties that are going to hook up? Or if there's only 54 of them, that one property, if you mark that money, that money goes back to the county? It doesn't remain in the pool, is that correct?
The state's in the pool, we use it. My understanding is the county, we have got all of our paperwork on it. We have completely agreed. And I have to get the legislative article, these will really secure them, of course. My understanding is we both pay and the county, they're going to give us a check of $578,000.
So it's not necessarily going to be divided by those 55 homes? It's going to be divided by however many properties of them are hooked up? Is that correct?
Well, that's how I look at it. I don't, unless you agree with us a difference, and that'll be picked up. We get $578,000.
All right, it's good money, and let's just hope, you know, it takes advantage of that.
Yeah, so, you know, that whole neighborhood has been so impacted over the years. Like Joe said, there are people that can't shower on rainy days. And the kids, you know, when they're... And I think that the idea of repurposing the cesspools, beginning some of that surface water and putting it into the pools, I think is a great idea. And that will do all of the stuff.
It doesn't depend on the integrity of the pool that's there.
Any other questions from the public? As we go down the road, probably mid-April sometime, beginning of May, once we have a real clear calendar of what's going to happen because the bids will go out. At that point in time, we'll be bringing the neighbors, the residents of that neighborhood along to do exactly the same presentation again, with a little more detail for them. But I think even detail in terms of some of these numbers, you know, I think it will get closer knowing what the exact numbers are in terms of their costs. And that's what I really want to do, is I want to be able to squeeze us down as close as we can, so it's less than what you're spending now.
Once we get the bids in, then we know, we know exactly. Right now, it's an estimated price. We all know that bidding is contingent on whether or not contractors who are normally engaged in this type of work, are they busy, are they not busy? You know, how hungry are they? So, I mean, once the bids come in, we should have a really good idea of...
Thank you very much. Any other questions, first of all? Thank you. All right, thank you very much, Mr. President. Last request approval, set a public hearing. We met section 415. There's 27 views code to clarify the time for this particular view. If there's something, something that needs to be...
Clarification for some of the operations.
Motion, second. Seven, two.
Alright.
Okay, we had a set of public hearing for April fourteenth to consider overriding the two percent tax gap. And I'd like to move that for April fourteenth to April twenty, March twenty-fourth. Yeah, March twenty-fourth. Yeah, and you know, as I indicated, when it was first done, when Treasurer Ron Korsak said, it's a place that should be, we haven't broken, we've done it every year. And it is really something that's protection against any errors and complications. So, motion, please. Second. One favor?
Alright.
Chamber of Commerce, can you hear?
Good evening, everybody. Good to be here. First, I want to start off by thanking the mayor for joining us at our grand opening ribbon cutting ceremony for Sally Mid Pharmacy, right on the corner of West Avenue, Main Street. And if you get a chance, I encourage all the village board to come down. It's really a beautiful, full-service pharmacy for all aspects of our community. Got to talk to Mr. Diaz, the owner, and some of the great services they offer all members of the community, including delivery. It's, it's full-time, community service, small business activities that you like to see in a small community. So, thank you again for coming and we welcome them, of course, as our newest member to the Chamber of Commerce. Hey, everybody knows it's March and March is that time of the month, that, that month of the year where we all are Irish, including Mayor Poney, Eric even wearing the green tie, I see today, so that's very nice. And of course, it culminates with our St. Patrick's Day parade, March the thirtieth. Plans are coming along great. I know we got eight pipe bands all signed up, ready to go. The passing of Sash last month was a huge success. As you know, part of this is our five K, May the Road Rise to Meche, five K race. Thanks to the help of our recreation department, we have made registration of the race much easier. And you can do it online, you visit the island, find me a website, you could sign up, register online and save the long line on race day of registration. So encourage everybody to participate in that. And we, I'm sure by March thirtieth, it's gotta be like sixty degrees, it's gotta be.
What time do the races kick off?
Uh, twelve-thirty, the race and the parade. Actually, the race itself will probably start at right at twelve-twenty, and then the parade follows immediately after at twelve-thirty. Alright, another upcoming event for the chamber that we're all excited about. Our foundation is holding its annual beautification luncheon and dinner. That's taking place April the twenty-third at the Harbor Crab. It's our, a very well-known fundraiser, it's been going on for decades and it does raise the money for the beautification committee. You'll be getting more information about that as, as the tickets are made available and sent out. Couple other events I wanna make sure the members or the board is aware. We are having a networking meeting for our members and we always invite our elected officials to come as well. The theme of our networking meeting is a celebration of Route one-twelve. Sometimes Route one-twelve gets forgotten as a hard hatchout with all the attention on Main Street. So we are, kind of celebrating Route one-twelve businesses at Rudy's Bar and Grill on one-twelve. It is just outside the village, but I think they'll let you guys come in if you guys want to come on.
Just to give you some history of one-twelve, my grandfather was the first to make it on one-twelve in nineteen eighty-eight. Seventy-eight.
Excellent, excellent.
Well, come through, please.
Well, I'll make sure we'll toast to your grandfather at this celebration. And then, and then we have our monthly general membership meeting on March twenty-fifth. This one, we're really proud to have our county executive Steve Bologna come and address us. So it would be great to get as many people as possible to welcome the county executives to our community. And again, of course, we invite so everybody in the board, please come on down. And just a couple of, well, one loose end I just, well, not really loose end, but just, I know, you know, April first is coming up and that's when you really wanted to kind of put the sandwich board issue to bed and come up with the final resolution. You know, if there's any assistance, you're putting the committee together.
May first.
Oh, May, oh, there was May first? Okay, I wasn't aware of that, May first. Could they give us another month, which is nice? But certainly if you need help in putting a committee together and getting that together, I wasn't aware that was pushed back to May.
We have budget to do, a couple of things, can't get time, so.
Good. I, we appreciate the extra time. And then the last thing, and I know at the last board meeting, it was a vote on the Live After Five. We had a discussion about the extension. Since that last meeting, I know Trustee Crean did come down and meet with the restaurant committee. And from what I understand, it was a very good discussion, maybe reconsidering that. A letter was sent from the restaurant committee to the mayor and the village board that hopefully have a copy of. They have, a lot of them have come down here tonight and, you know, certainly wanted to see if there was any way we could reconsider that and get them that an extra half hour that they were looking for. So I don't know if you wanted to do this now or wait until another vote?
We have a discussion now.
Okay.
Yeah, just, I was wanting to thank Dave for indicating, you know, informing me about the time at the, at the meeting and while there were a lot of new restaurateurs involved in the meeting, you know, there were a couple of people that I see in the audience tonight that wasn't at the meeting, so I'd be interested to hear what they have to say as well. But, you know, they described what the efforts are that they have to put into funding the event and setting up the stages and setting up the barricades and all logistics that go into hosting the event. And came and listened to what their concerns were and what their projections were and what their wishes were and, you know, they're really adamant and passionate about the fact that the extra half hour that they would get would make a difference to them economically to cover some of those costs. So, you know, at that meeting, I told Mr. Banana, who was in the, in the audience, to draft a letter to the mayor and the board, you know, perhaps we'll resurrect the conversation. Trustee Devon was not at the, at the meeting last time to get her input as well. And see if there's a way in which we'd be able to, you know, resurrect the conversation and see if there's a way we might be able to find a middle ground for them. So initially, they were looking for a ten PM, you know, deadline to, to close the event and I'd like to hear the opinions of the rest of the board, as well as some of the restaurateurs that are in the audience tonight, give a little more feedback as to what their wishes are.
Is it all right if I turn it over to Jamie Manna from the restaurant committee? And maybe you can just explain some of his thoughts and go from there?
Sure. Thank you, David. Uh, thank you, Trustee Crean, for being with us at Harbor Crab a couple of weeks ago. Like I drafted in the letter, along with our brick house barbecue, just like what David said is, especially last year, with the switch to Thursdays, we thought the event was great, but what we noticed was the time people got down to the event was a little later. I don't know if it's because people don't get that Friday, you know, cut out of work early and they get down to the village. But with the times people get into it, at the eight forty-five less goal mark, we're just starting to get going. And it is a, to make it worthwhile for us, we're setting up the pans and incurring the extra cost and paying the chamber and extra staff and security and the trucks and, and all that. We did originally ask for ten, even, you know, nine fifteen, I know Trustee Crean made a suggestion that maybe the music is stopped at nine fifteen as well, and we can get everyone off the streets by nine-thirty. But I know Village Idiot, Public House, BBQ, they weren't at that meeting with you. So maybe say we'd like to hear maybe from them. That's pretty much the stance of all the restaurants came together at our committee and just said, you know, how can we make this event good, what's the pros, what's the cons? And a reoccurring issue, you know, we're just starting, people are just starting to get into the village around eight o'clock and, you know, we're just starting to finally turn our, you know, profit after, after all that invented. Just ask if you could reconsider, even at nine fifteen, it'd be a big difference for us. I mean, Eric, do you have anything to add?
Hi, Eric, I'm Rick in from BBQ. I wasn't at that meeting behind you for going, Jerry. The same thing that Jamie says, you know, it was a Friday night event, it was a great event. I think maybe it got a little too big. We may, we all agree that we moved it to Thursday. We kept the same time and I think that, you know, on Thursday, it's not Friday. People have to work the next day and the same type of crowd doesn't come out. It's more family oriented. So if you think that maybe that going to nine-thirty, we may run into some maybe the issues that you thought maybe occurred on those Friday nights at nine-thirty, ten o'clock, I think that that's not the case. It's, it's a different event now that it's on Thursday. And I think the nine-thirty time that we're asking for is fair, since it's not Friday, it's back into Thursday. And it really does make a difference, will make a difference for some of the restaurants, whether they partake in the event or not. And if we have some restaurants that don't partake in the event, it's not the same event. We need all that outdoor activity, we need all that hoopla that goes on outside. And I believe last year on Thursday night, I think we had a pretty much a perfect record in getting off the street and behavior and all that. So I don't see why, you know, the extra half hour. And I think the preliminary meeting that we had at the chamber office where the, the building, the stuff the county PD was there, they didn't have a problem with it either. So I think we had their blessing back then. And to go to nine-thirty now would be advantageous for all of us that own bars and restaurants.
What time do we shut the music off? Nine o'clock the music will shut this year? And if it's like nine fifteen, it shuts the music this year?
We'll get nine fifteen and, you know, let's call nine-thirty, everyone off the streets by nine-thirty. Just extending the nine PM till nine-thirty and the music from eight forty-five to nine fifteen. Or not from nine, nine, nine fifteen.
Yeah, because we said eight forty-five was the last call, so now nine fifteen would be the last call, so then nine-thirty.
We can, we can have music like called nine fifteen as well.
And then the music will sound at nine fifteen.
Next at thirty minutes.
Is there anybody else, John, did you wanna come up and voice any?
I think Jamie drafted a perfect letter, you know, basically the same thing we discussed, you know, at the meeting when you were present. I don't think we asked for too much. There are a lot of costs to go into as far as the square footage and paying for the bands and the village is gracious. The chamber actually, you know, they give us money toward bands, but we have staffing and, you know, beer and everything else outside. I mean, that's big Troy, one of the five. It was a nice event last year, we didn't have any problems. So, I mean, like Jamie said, that extra half an hour is really your peak time. So that makes it worthwhile for us. I can be honest with you, if I add everything up last year, I mean, if there's any kind of profit, it was minimal. It's when after everything is done, people who are in your pen hopefully filter into your establishment and that's where you homeless, you jump up, close your business up. So an extra half an hour outside, it makes for, you know, a good event for everybody who attends it and of course for us is, you know, better something.
Not employees and everyone.
Let me do this. Let us as a board kind of chew water between now and the next meeting. And come back to this meeting with a left decision for you.
That's fair.
Okay?
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Appreciate it, let's appreciate your time.
David, I have a question.
Sure.
Who pays for what? I mean, who pays for the bands?
Um, we reimburse them up for a certain point. That was with the procedural last year. I mean, I am talking to the committee and maybe just coming up with the one fee. Cause we do charge, they're charging the fee for the space. Uh, they get charged a fee, have the space with that, but I, huh? It's space per square foot, yeah, four dollars a square foot. Yeah, it was based on the square footage that they take up in the area.
So for instance, say, Eric, how much do you pay?
Average, average.
The average bill to the, to the, is like three to four thousand dollars. Some more, some a little less.
For the whole event?
For the whole year? So out of four events, right, four events?
Yeah, about a thousand dollars in an event, something by size, you know.
And, you know, I mean, I'm actually looking to change, I don't know why they came up with this formula where they pay us money for the space, they pay for the bands and then we're writing a check back to them for the bands. I'd rather just have a one fee and, and let them pay care of it and we're working on that. So that might change a little bit, but right now, yes, they did get reimbursed, that's sort of the thing.
Restaurants don't pay for the bands, or they do pay?
They do pay for the bands. But we reimburse them, I think it's a few hundred dollars per band, per week, per week.
Right, so some of the bands cost, you know, it's more than what we're getting reimbursed. And then the trailers cost.
We, we always have bands.
Yes, but they, they set up the bands, we don't, the chamber.
But the chamber, I mean, before these guys were out on the street, before there were pens out there, that's not so many years.
Um, well, it's, we're into our eleventh year. The pens have been around for about at least six or seven.
That long?
Yeah, yeah, it's been, it's been a while. But I think it's always been, the, the first couple, the chamber used to organize the bands and all. But I think at one point, at some point, the chamber realized, you're gonna get the real, the bands that attract, you know, you really wanna talk to them because they know what bands attract what crowd. They got the better connection with the bands and who to talk to. So it made more sense that the, the bar restaurants would actually pick the bands within the stage within their place. So there is a small reimbursement, they do get back on that. You know, I'm thinking about adjusting the fee that they pay as opposed to reimbursing it back for the bands. I think it makes more accounting sense from my perspective of taking money back to them than writing a back check. Just, to me, it was kind of silly.
Is this a fundraiser for the chamber?
Absolutely, it's a fundraiser. I would say, you know, there's probably about ten, fifteen thousand that is raised by the chamber, but when is it all said and done?
Now, for instance, a band that's playing in front of BBQ. Whose band is it? It's BBQ's band or?
They split, like in that state.
Yeah, for that one, I, we both, Brick House and BBQ both count of a band, obviously. So we do every other week.
Right, with, with the Village Idiot, every week was his band, cause that was just his stage.
Same thing that's happened, we had our own stage.
Right, Parabellum, Public House, they split. Again, they split two and two. Which is, you know, you know, one thing with the new introduction of restaurants in town, and we're working with that, like the meatball place would love to participate. But obviously you can't have those stages so close to each other and it's gonna drown each other out. So we do have to get a little creative on how we're gonna arrange that this year. You know, Jim Skidmore from Brick House is in charge of the event this year and he's got some, a lot of plans, maybe kind of relaying out how we do, we do everything and adding a much more artistic element. Kind of cutting down on the, some of the vendors that are coming in that may not be as attractive, as draw, as, you know, our local artists would be. We wanna give them a lot of space.
That was one thing that Jim mentioned that was, you know, really was one of the swaying points of it. Because, you know, this event has transformed from what its original goal and intention was and it, you know, for the, for the event to be sustainable, it needs to change, it needs to morph into something different than just a, a drinking festival. So Jim had some very good ideas about getting Arts Council involved, you know, changing the event into a more, you know, a more family oriented sort of evening. And he had some great ideas, I wish he was here tonight to share the little.
Yeah, he couldn't make it tonight, but I do want, I mean, we're still kind of, you know, putting the, you know, the final plans together. I mean, there's a lot of great ideas that need to now kind of be put on paper and finalized. And once that happens, I'm definitely gonna bring him down and really value who, I, what I think as a community he's gonna see as a, a huge improvement on the festival. You know, just getting away from it as a place to drink is more of a, a celebration of our community. I think, you know, there's gonna be theme nights that Jim's talked about. Each week would have a special theme as a way to, you know, make it different for people that come down as well, you know. But, I mean, the thing I've always considered about Live After Five, I know from a lot of perspectives, some people we talk to and it's like, oof, you know, do we need a Live After Five anymore because of what's going on in Main Street? But it amazes me to how many people from outside the community call and ask about a Live After Five. Or if you talk to people that are, that are in Nassau County a lot and you ask, tell them about Hatchout, the first thing that comes to their mind is a Live After Five. I mean, we've created a brand that's really resonated throughout Long Island with a Live After Five. So I think it's more important that we try to prove it, make it work and keep that, since we're so positively identified by it, than just let it all fall apart. And certainly I'm very thankful to the village and working with us and hearing us out and continue to work well with the chamber and, you know, hopefully, you know, before the season comes up for next week.
Well, you, you're right about that, because I make my way around to a lot of these things. People speak about it incessantly. What night's when, I mean, the Thursday's okay, you know. So it truly is an asset and it is a brand. It is a brand, it's who we are. So your request basically is go to nine fifteen and I can in.
Music, alcohol, nineteen, and whatever, but off. Even more.
It's by night, dirty. Let us do this. Let us chew water and come back to twenty-four tomorrow.
Thank you, thank you very much. I'm gonna consider my as well, thank you.
Jim, Eric, thank you very much. Time to end.
So we're gonna open the public hearing.
So we're going to open the public hearing. Take a motion on this. It's my resolution. So it should be, it's pretty simple at that point to make that change.
Thank you, Mayor. On here, uh, just very short tonight. You've gone past the Patchogue Theater over the last few days. You'll see the roof is in the process of being installed. So I understand. I got an email today saying it's going very smoothly. It's amazing how quiet they are up there, but the next few weeks that should be done. They're just, they're starting to put the trim on already. And I guess the first layer of whatever insulation or whatever is on the roof, it's up. So if you take a look past the theater, you'll see that. So good week to do also. Yeah, yeah. Good weather. So I'm going to get a little rain and snow on Wednesday, I think. But it hurt our, our installation. This weekend is for all the parrot heads. What was his name, Joe?
Mac.
Macanelli.
Mac, Macanelli at Patchogue Theater. He is a major player in the Jimmy Buffett Band. And it's going to be a great show for parrot heads. And you know who's opening up the show? Ed Travers, Patchogue's own Ed Travers. So it's, uh, it's going to be a great show at the theater. Last week, Mayor and I had the supreme, supreme pleasure of being at the Not So Moody Wedding. It was very funny. And I tell people that it was so funny, my cheeks hurt. It really was. And I just have to mention that the mayor was there and he had the opportunity to meet Bob Eubanks. And what a class guy he was. And were very happy about being at the theater. Loved the theater. Uh, was happy to be in Patchogue and a real good guy, real class act. And had a good crowd at the theater. So go to patchotheater.com, see what else is coming up. Got the Patchogue Music Festival, uh, the Folk Festival coming up. And Suzanne Vega, yes, 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 and a number of other shows. So just go right to the website. I would just like to say that last week, we pulled in about twenty-seven hundred dollars on the parking meters. So it has been as successful as we thought, considering how the weather's been. Uh, but I know that people are saying now when they go into the village in the morning now, there are spaces on Main Street that weren't there before. Mark, can you?
Yeah.
Yeah, people are, the store owners and employees are not parking on Main Street.
No, they're parking in two hours though.
Mark, and do you have any concerns with my customers at all about this?
Uh, well, whenever it comes into my store, I tell them right away from the front. I say to them, did you put money in the, in the, uh, in the meters? And some of them say, I didn't know we have meters. Cause the, the machines, I know they're, they're placed, they're not placed close, close. I know, but some people don't realize it, you know. They see a number on the thing. They don't know what it means.
Yeah, and, and some people have, have said to me that they, they went into a restaurant and, and, uh, were, were told that, don't worry about the meters. They don't give out tickets. Well, I can tell you right now that there are violations being handed out.
Yeah, I.
We're being very casual about it. Uh, we are not waiting by, by a space, so what it's wired. There is a fifteen minute grace period, but the only way this is going to work is if we enforce it. And hopefully people will get the message. And again, just as a reminder.
Just to let you know.
Yes.
Like when I talked to this guy, I don't know if I told you on the phone, it was given out tickets. He says, it's only twenty-five dollars. It says, yeah, but my customer's spending five hundred. That twenty-five dollars, you know, I mean, that, that, you may, maybe you make twenty-five dollars. You can pay it, but sometimes customers.
Well, our thought is not it's only twenty-five dollars. It is twenty-five dollars. And it's not, you know, um, we're not kidding. We're, we're, you know, twenty-five dollars is a lot of money to people. And we expect people to be using the meters. And again, just a reminder, they're going to be in the parking lots come June. And so we'll have that program put together shortly to, to make that happen. So.
Let me, Eric, good question. One of the concerns somebody's given to me, and this is like a, a work in progress. The time limit on the, on the meter is now an hour and a half. Somebody coming in for a meal, a lunch. Cause we're considering moving it to.
We are.
To two hours. Going to two hours better than an hour and a half?
I thought the purpose was you could make money. They don't want people to keep feeding the meter? No, um. Yeah, two hours would be better for us in nighttime, certainly. But I think what's going to happen is people is going to use that all night pass. And you're going to go out. They just pop around town. They use the all night pass. So. And also.
Yeah, well, the street meters, once we get the meters in the parking lots, the street meters will go up to two hours. That's what our plan is. They're going to go up in price and then they're going to go up to two hours. Uh, the reason why they're going to go up in price, and we mentioned this a couple of weeks ago, is that we want to still entice people to go into the parking lots. And especially the employees to go back in the parking lots. So they're not taken into good spaces.
And also put yourself in a woman, as a woman. It takes three hours, ones to walk in or walk, walk around and go and get amazed at our store. I mean, they. The next hour, they have the girls, they get the thing, they get the dress for me. They're going to come out and put money in in the two hours? No, three hours.
There are space, there will be spaces with unlimited parking.
Yeah, I know. I own that, but they don't want to walk.
They'll fit into the babies for that.
But I understand.
So, so again, uh, we are, I'm looking at this list right now. There are quite a few. Our parking meter officers are doing their job. And they're, they're giving out violations. There's a lot of parking violations.
Jack, if I could just, if you don't mind, because last week, since we did go live, I got at least one to two calls, if not a visit at the counter from out of town visitors. So I had asked David, and I think he did, but since there are business owners here. What Mark said is to help us because we're not in the business to really want to take the people's money. We want them to comply. The out of town visitors are the ones that may not have familiarized themselves. I think we did a great job letting residents know, letting the business owners know.
Yeah.
But one in particular was a funeral, a family came for a funeral from the North Shore. They didn't know. They weren't paying attention. They didn't know what the numbers meant. So those people, I think, if the businesses who, like Mark said, did you park on Main Street? Did you use the meter? If they didn't, then at least to let them know right up front, please get out there and put your money in the meter so that they don't have to.
Yeah, in the, in the lots, there'll be signs as soon as they pull in the lots going to say meter parking in select locations or whatever. So.
Maybe we should take a couple of hundred dollars and put it in the news day and say, listen, he comes to Patchogue. Make sure you put money in your meter.
Well, maybe if there's a news day reporter in the house, he could write it in the thing. I know they do it in the advance regularly.
Oh, no, 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 I'm not paying those prices. Here's the thing.
I would try to encourage people to download the Park Mobile app.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I didn't realize until last week that you have to put the village code in before your parking spot number.
And if you scan it.
Well, this, uh, because Park Mobile has, has a lot of different areas. So there is a, our community has got a code that you have to establish.
I think it's eight seven zero one. But so, so the app said, put in your parking spot. And it said it's a three digit number, but the parking spots are only two digit numbers. So he was putting in zero five seven. They kept coming up invalid. So I was like, you know, I know your spot's two number. This says it has to be three. I don't know what to tell you. And then he went outside by the thing. He said, oh, you have a village code. It's eight seven zero one, I think it is. And you, you have, you have to put that first here, then your parking spot.
Well, what I tell most people who have, uh, have issues like that is I say, if you read the instructions clear, you know, read all the instructions, you will be able to pay for the parking. And what I find is people don't follow the instructions and they're written down, you know. But I was, in fact, I was in the village the other night and a woman was having a problem with the meter. And I, you know, introduced myself and I said, look, I'll walk you through it. And we did it and followed the instructions and she was able to pay and.
We're going to invite the Park Mobile representative to our next restaurant committee meeting. Just so we can get all of us all on board and maybe send a message to the whole Chamber, call them by the code.
Yeah, that's great. Thanks.
The village code, you can only put in, you put in once on your phone and that's one, that's your favorite. You know, you call it your favorites and Patchogue would be our favorite. So you only have to put it on one time.
Reggie, Greg, John.
All right, that's, that's all I have.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, well, members, um, I'm also going to be very brief tonight. Obviously we're trying to chase down potholes. Our email address has been effective. Gets you an opportunity to get the calls, you know, get the messages quickly and on as quickly as you can. Other than that, relatively quiet. The CD, I mean, the other night, um, Mary did give us an update on the East Main Street sidewalk project. They did have a meeting with all the business owners who were on board. And I believe Brian is writing up some sort of legal, the escrow work and stuff like that. And so hopefully we'll give the target after Easter, right, Mary?
After Easter.
After Easter. So that's, that's who we're calling to do it. And that's all I have to do.
Within that, you want to put a tree pit area in front of it?
Yes, um, there'll be two, uh, Dennis Smith from the Big Business and Brumman District has designed two bit tree pits. One in front of Burlington and the other one in front of the, um, the lens building. So those will be the, uh, cause those are the broad, broad widest areas in the sidewalk.
That sort of widens up. Just a nice area to do.
Yeah, I think, um, I think Trustee Devlin has given an idea. So they're going to be long and they'll have benches on either side, on either end. And then, uh, you know, the tree pits and then some plantings.
And then maybe the, the other trees that have smaller pits, maybe those could be a thing to, to talk about that.
We're going to talk about that.
So they kind of all have the same theme.
Yes, so we'll meet with you.
Period lighting?
We're, we don't have the funding for the period lighting, but we are laying conduit. So that in the, in the future, when we have the funding, we can put in period lighting.
Let's, let's go from what the cost will be and how many lights you would have to put in. Let's see if there's where we can find some funding for it. We do, let's do it once, do it right.
Okay, so we'll measure it out and we'll, then mirrors what we did on the rest of Main Street and just continue it down.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because what happens, it ends at, at the other side. Then you have this dark area. We can't do it on both sides, but now we could do it possibly on one side.
Okay, we'll do that.
You know, Mary, very quickly, just with it, they don't need to be as close as they are on Main Street.
On the rest of Main Street?
On the rest of West Main Street going down to the four corners. Cause we're not going to take the, the overhead lighting out.
Okay.
On Main Street is the primary lighting.
All right.
On Main Street. We don't need it as primary lighting. The primary lighting will be overhead. So maybe do a few less. No, that's basic.
Okay. Well, and two, I think with the tree pits, that may work better anyway. Cause the tree pits will be larger. So you may want to spread them out just so that it, you know, it's a little less expensive.
Like I said, you come down and now you, you get the new section.
Yeah, I understand. Okay, then we'll, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Mayor, just one quick item is that, um, I guess everybody would be happy to hear that the, the Old Town Hall, they're going to be using the construction from the Racquet Alley. They're quite familiar with Village. They've done a number of projects with it up to here. And, um, John Catherine and myself and Paul met with Nick just a couple of weeks ago. Had a complete tour of the building and, um, very happy to hear that they'll be involved as the construction manager of the project. They're quite capable and, um, in addition, they're going to be using the DS Architecture from East Main Street, which Roger Smith, a great guy, very, uh, very well familiar with the project. So, um, it's a great team that's been assembled. And, um, you know, I want to thank Mayor for participating in this whole deal. It's been, uh, been a long journey.
Yeah, how, um, do you have any story, you know, they've talked about.
Problem? I would say probably sometime in the summer. It's still looking to get a closing date from town. And, um, they're ready to go. They have, uh, I guess an application that they need to make for their map and plan. So wait for that to come back. But, um, you know, they'll, they'll be looking to stopper soon and say, maybe they'll probably make some of those.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's all I have. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, fellow trustees, Brian Panning, all residents, I'll be brief. First, a little comment about the new Patchogue. Uh, new Village, two hundred and ninety-one apartments, twenty percent are leased, approximately sixty are leased. They're very happy over there. The uptake in leases is somewhat above expectations so far. Uh, so they'll start occupancy on the beginning of April and they expect to be finished by September. Now, I've been asked about the taxes that we get. I can't make the number up. The assessor has to provide it to us and as soon as we get it.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, the assessor commented, maybe they just don't have it. Uh, on Riverwalk, the entire east side of, uh, Road Boulevard is, as you know, is, is developed. All units are sold except eight. And there's only one school age child in the entire development. I'm sorry, Claros Boulevard. They're in, at the district attorney's office or something like that. They're at the government level for the.
The Attorney General's Office.
Attorney General's Office, right, for the offering for the other side. So our new real estate stuff is, is going great. Now.
How many units are on this side?
I don't know. Well, I shouldn't know. Well, there's a hundred and sixty-one in the whole thing, but clearly the.
But if there's forty on this side.
The west side is, is much bigger.
Yeah, I think there are forty on this side. And if you take the tax revenue from the others, it's about fifteen hundred. So if you're looking at forty, you're looking at about sixty thousand dollars worth of village money.
Current income.
Current income. Coming over that side starting next year.
So both of those developments are, to say the least, very successful. Uh, now a comment about old Patchogue. Uh, you know, we, we never mentioned residences that are problematic up here. None of us do because it's prejudicial. We make a public statement about a house on West Avenue. That's problematic. That's across the street from me or something like that. Uh, that can come back to bite us. But be assured that, uh, lots of people are diligently chasing down these problematic properties. And I'm very pleased that, to request a public hearing on one of them, finally. I'm requesting a public hearing, uh, to review the, uh, well, I'm not sure what the phrase is. Unsafe and hazardous building at two oh three West Avenue Patchogue. You know, that's the building that burned, uh, last September. Uh, there's a Mercedes Benz station waiting, sitting in the front yard.
Yeah.
Uh, it was occupied by squatters. And the Village, uh, I got to say, uh, thanks to Brian. We're, we're very aggressively going after this property. By the way, it's, it's a bank book property, but the bank doesn't want to do anything about it. So we have some powers. I'm not saying we're going to do this because we have to have a public hearing to, to make it so. But we can condemn it and we can demolish it on our own.
And charge the bank.
And charge the bank for it. So we're, we're pursuing, uh, that path. When should we have a hearing?
Twenty eighth?
Twenty third. April twenty eighth. Okay, sorry.
Would that be done just on the opinion of Mr. Sarich or do we need an independent assessment of that property from?
Chief Building Inspector's opinion. It's his certification that it fits the definition of an unsafe structure, which is set forth in the definition of chapter one sixty-two. And he's already made that initial conclusion in a report, uh, which will be distributed to the board ahead of time. He's got a servant notice and a certain due process requirements that are set forth in the chapter, both to the interested owner, who was absent, and the interested party was the bank, who obviously has some value in this house. They're invited to come before the board to present, to present a review of cases to whether it fits under an unsafe structure. And the board can make the determination as to what's going to happen next. Certainly gain their attention and attending would be excellent. But being the banks track records and our history in the village, uh, in all villages throughout New York State, I should say, or all businesses around New York State, these, the banks are not exactly the best neighbors. So it would be unusual if they responded, but we're hopeful they will respond to our village department and try to remedy what's going on with this house now, as opposed to letting it just deteriorate to the state that it's in now and forcing us to have to knock it down.
Can you clarify, um, the type of public hearing? This isn't a hearing where the public speaks on it?
Correct. No testimony from the public.
What is involved?
It's a hearing to the extent that. It's a hearing to the extent that they, the, the property owner, who has a vested interest right...
They did have notice.
Can respond, correct. They get notice, can respond to our allegation that the property is unsafe. It's not like a local law.
It's, it's more of a, a general hearing than a public hearing.
Correct.
It's, it's one of those hearings that's done in public, for public consumption, but the public can't react to it.
Correct. More, more aligned with a court case.
Exactly.
By the way, it was a terrible fire. Uh, the siding on the building next door would look like bacon. Uh, it was, it was completely melted, so I have no doubt that there's not a whole lot left, but I feel... Anyway, that, I guess that's a motion.
Yeah, it's a motion, no, a public hearing on that.
April what?
Twenty eighth.
Twenty.
April twenty. The purpose of clearing, whatever the address is.
Two oh three West Avenue.
Two oh three West Avenue, unsafe structure. Motion, Trustee Barrett, second.
Second.
Trustee Devlin, favor.
Hi.
So, Jerry.
And, uh, I want you to know that there's a whole bunch of other establishments in the village, residences, that are being very aggressively pursued. We're in Portland, much, there's a lot of stuff going on. These, these, I'm, I'm very impatient, I mean, I'm really tired looking at some of this stuff. Uh, and I'm sure many of you are as well, but there's, we can't make it go any faster. Uh, the, the, the law protect us residents first, and the, the village to bring mail is very challenging. That's all I have.
You wanna talk about the question you said, uh...
Oh, yes. Since Mr. Keys had such a successful, uh, response to his pothole...
In Patchogue Village.
Patchogue Village pothole, uh, I'm, I'm gonna ask that we set up a housing email. Uh, it, it seems to have been a very good vehicle, and I hope the media carries this news bag, that, I, what we'll call it, Housing, uh, Patchogue Housing dot...
Housing, in fact, in blue, so, but that's...
Yeah, and anybody who has anything to say, good or bad, just send us an email, we'll, we'll look at it freely.
Ask me.
Good to do that, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the money, since I asked for it.
Trustee Devlin.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, I have, um, your question and approval for live amplified music at Fireman's Park, and I have John Sean up here, who is the organizer of the Jerry Jam, and he's gonna talk to the board about his plans, so, John, if you could come up. State your name and address for the project.
Hi, my name is John Sean, I live at one fifteen North Crossback. And for those of you who don't know me, I've been a resident of this town for twenty-two years. I'm very proud to be here. Uh, and for many of those years, I, I participated in many community events. Uh, the first one with the village was the Entry Committee, which I saw as still active and, and working here, so I'm very happy to say that I was part of getting trees into Patchogue at the, at the onset. I'm very excited to be following after Eric and the, uh, and the Lock After Five, because that event really is one of the things that has made Patchogue become, uh, a, a object in everybody's mind throughout Long Island. It's part of what is making, uh, Patchogue a destination, which, uh, I'm working on grants to bring destinations, to make it a tourist-type destination as well. I've worked with the Patchogue Arts Council for six years, and we've put on a number of events that have brought lots of people into the town as well. I've worked with music, with the Blue Point Brewery, and with the, uh, Plaza Media Arts Center, to also bring people into the community as well, too. But with all of that, I have my personal passion as well, too. And my personal passion is the music of Jerry Garcia, and over the last seven years, uh, we have, six rather, in this town, we have had an event at, uh, Fireman's Park, which has been successful, um, relatively, people you would say, for gatherings of over a few hundred people, and, um, would like to do it again this year. Uh, this year, we'd like to do it on August sixteen, uh, sixteenth and seventeenth, a Saturday and Sunday, of which we'd like to have, uh, live music from one to eleven on Saturday and one to nine on Sunday. Uh, a little caveat on that is that the fire department only allows music till ten o'clock on Saturday, allows us to be there till ten o'clock. Uh, I asked for eleven, so I have a little bit of room to negotiate till ten thirty. So, so that's what I would like to do, uh, and on Sunday, uh, the same kind of issue going till nine o'clock. We went to two days from Long Island because I, I've been, um, I get asked by musicians from all over Long Island to come and play, and I've turned down tons of musicians who want to participate, and, uh, two days doesn't seem to be enough. You know, they're just, there's a lot of people who wanna, wanna do this. We're, uh, we're a relatively, um, calm group of people, if you would, could imagine that people like us would be, but, you know, the average age of a person there is fifty years old, so, uh, you know, we're not, we're not a group of youngsters who are helping develop, uh, creating a, uh, a scene in town, so, uh, we just like to get together and listen to the music, and we are a really an extended family now. Uh, last year, I met, uh, a couple that said they've been there for the last three years. They met there three or four years ago and got married. And they come every year to celebrate their anniversary with us, you know, so it's, it's a... For people who don't, uh, you know, participate in this kind of event, it's, uh, you, you'd think, you might have, you know, ideas about what kind of people we are, but we're just really mostly community-oriented people who have a passion for, uh, a similar music. Uh, the Blue Point Brewery brings a beer truck down, and, uh, we are, we're fully insured through the Blue Point Brewery. We have security as, per your suggestion from last year, which made my life so much easier that I wanna thank you for it. Or was it fire, somebody suggested bringing fire, uh, security down. Made my life so much easier, I, I could just let security worry about any issue that I came up with, and that was a, a, a very good thing. So, once again, uh, you know, the music is, uh, is, is for a particular taste, but it's, it's one that draws a number of people from around Long Island, but a large amount of people actually live in Patchogue who come there. Probably fifty percent of the people who show up live within three miles or four miles of, of, uh, Fireman's Park. Each year, we get to donate some money to Fireman's Park. I asked, I've asked where they wanted it to go. In some years, it went to, just directly for upkeep of the park, and other years, it went to the, uh, to, uh, Mike Lee Riley, is it them? Mike Lee Riley?
Yeah.
Yes, the Scholarship Fund at the high school, you know, so we put, we put money into that as well, too. So we're again, once again, asking for, uh, uh, live music to go along with our festivities, and, uh, hope you, I think it's a good idea to have this kind of stuff in the community, because it is one of the things that people from all of Long Island are starting to hear as a reason to come to, to Patchogue. There's an event that's happening in September, uh, which is similar, that's only been around for a year or two, which is called the Grateful Fest, and it happens in, uh, up at, um, where did they do it? They do it at, at place with the, with the, uh, the, a little astronomy space on the north shore.
Vanderbilt Mountain.
Vanderbilt, yes, they use that field and they have, you know, they've been doing that for just the last couple of years. But we've been in Patchogue for six, and we're looking to do our seventh year as well.
Jerry.
Jerry Jam.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Jim. Remember, sorry to be correct, when I think last year, we did have some issues with, um, music going later than the wood. We did hear some residents down there, and, uh, in fact, I think, uh, Trustee Hill and I were approached by a couple of code enforcement guys who were having some issues with the, the woman was running the jam, uh, just kind of blatantly ignoring requests to stop at the time that they were supposed to request and went later than, shit, or later than what, what time was allowed. And some of the residents down at that end, who we do put quite a bit of burden on between the, the, um, uh, the music festival that we have down there and everything else that goes on, uh, quite often down at that end of town. And, um, I think there was some quite upset residents.
I'm sorry to say that. We, we stopped on time on, on, whoopsie, Saturday, sun, uh, it was Friday back then, and I believe we went over fifteen minutes, and then complaining, I didn't want to stop them in the middle of a song, and just fifteen minutes, we were expecting...
Which generally are to fifteen, the, the complaints generally come a little after fifteen minutes. I think those people down there are used enough commotion that they, they do have a little bit themselves, cause I, I've been kind of leaving that most long in fifteen minutes.
No, definitely not.
And, uh, and our code enforcement guys were kind of upset with just their request being late to the award. So I, I'm a little concerned, especially about eleven o'clock, concerned about approving it all, to be honest with you, because we do an awful lot down there, and those residents take a lot of, of burden.
Well, I've been in contact with a number of them, and the ones that are closest have all, uh, given me support. The house due north, the house, uh, the one that's in the catty corner space over there, they're very happy to have us there. So, uh, I have gone and reached out to some of the neighbors already.
So you had a guarantee, you were, that the wood we know is in the past, in the tunnel, although we went nine o'clock. As John Sean knows more about it, he's gonna tell us that we're not gonna have any issues down there with music going later than supposed to.
Yes. That's why I'm asking for a little bit more, so we have a little bit of wiggle room. Uh, I would tell them ten o'clock and they'll...
I would rather that you've gone to the fire department first and then come to us, you know, you're gonna use us to get the fire department, you know, they have...
But you think, well, last year, though, he did it the other way, and then we told him to do it. He went to the fire department, came to us later, and we criticized him for doing that, so...
Well, the problem, one of the, the largest problem is, is that you should, what you should do is you should come and ask to see our concert schedule. Because that night, yeah, that was, Saturday night, we had the Kerry Kearney Bear.
Right.
We're paying a lot of money, come play at the band show from seven to nine.
On which night is that? That's a Saturday night, sixteen?
I, I stopped trying to fight this thing. But it's unfortunate to the residents that they're paying money, have a band down there, and we're trying to have a concert series a hundred yards away.
Well, I wanna tell you that I've tried every year to try to negotiate, I'm between the village and the fire department, and I attempted to get the week before, and something happened with the fire department, and I didn't get that. The week before was a week after I had wanted to do it, but I was asked by the village to move it back because it was too close to the...
It was Great South Bay.
Cause it was too close to the Great South Bay. So I'm a small player in this, and I, I, I couldn't, you know, I had to give Jim Faith his due respect and move back. I ran into the issue of, of, in the past, musicians who have chosen not to play at the Great South Bay Festival because of the camaraderie that we have in our event, they actually opted out last year from Jim Faith.
Well, you know, I understand all that, and I also totally appreciate what you've done, and I'm just trying to explain to...
I understand, and I've tried to get to you earlier, yes.
Having this band we've been, we've been pursuing for two years, we're finally gone, and now there's gonna be parking problems, there's gonna be battle of bands. Patsy was on the corner of, uh, Bay and Smith, it's gonna be, call me up again, you know. I'm just saying that it's very, very difficult to have these two events on the same evening. Now, our band has been posted for months, you know, and I, you know, I'm not going to suggest that we stop either one of them, but I've just, every year, I'm trying to tell you in the future that it's just so darn difficult to have them both on the same night.
I understand. I, um, I had hoped that I had good early this year.
I don't know what we're gonna do about Park, I have no idea. So, uh, we'll start with that, and perhaps we should get together and talk about it, you know, before these two events on the same evening come out.
And I would love that if, if it were all possible for next year, that I, I had first, I had first tried to contact the fire department in, in, I have a letter that I have on my computer late November, and it didn't seem to manage to get through the fire department well, and I didn't get, I didn't hear from them until, uh, January, and they told me that the date that I had asked for was, was now taken, so... So I'm trying to be, I'm trying to hear you, I'm trying to hear the fire department, I'm just trying to do this one thing at a time.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to do the same thing.
Yeah.
And so you have to stay in our frustration as well. Um, when I said, I, I understand that probably your luck's getting larger and larger every year.
That true.
Going under two nights.
Well, yes, in times, yes, but in...
I'm hoping that it gets even bigger and bigger, so that you can afford to move out of the village, and, you know, that we can all go back to one event, one night, one parking problem, you know.
You want me to move out of the village, huh?
No, no, I mean, I'd like to stay in the village, but they've gone so big that it's too small for you.
Well, yeah, it would've been, it would be great to be across the street sometime and plan that in advance, but, uh...
Where's that?
In the mansion.
In your park, oh, you should, put in for it.
Maybe next year?
Yeah.
You know, last year, we had a very similar issue with a different, uh, performer, performing at the band shows, and, um, and then we said was that, you know, we had given permission to go until, I think it was six thirty on Saturday, so it wouldn't overlap or conflict with the, with the band show, so it, um...
Well, it's the same, it's the same issue with the, uh, with the Lock After Five. If we would go to six thirty, you could not afford to have it, you know, so...
I think it's more of an issue with parking than sound, honestly, because I was there at Jerry Jam, and when I walked back to my house, all I could hear was the band show. And then I, I was in my yard, and I can always hear the band show, and then I walked back, and I could hear the band show, hear the band show. By the time I get there, the way they have their stage, I didn't hear the music till I got onto the property of, of Fireman's Field. So I think the parking was a problem, and I think part of what happened was we had talked about using behind, um, three eighty Bay on our property there and having some signage. I don't think there was enough signage to let Jerry Jam people know that they should be parking there and walking over. And I think if we could solve that problem this year, that would go a long way.
We'll give a security person by the parking, I mean...
If a security person could, and, and there has to be some signage, so that people know, and they're not all trying to get into that little space there or into that little lot, and we were trying to save areas, or we, I wasn't...
Are you talking, no, I'm sorry, are you talking about the parking lot where the basketball courts are, that lot there?
No, yeah.
Behind the baseball?
Right there.
Behind the softball?
Or by the softball. Because what I remember discussing with John, and they were trying to do, they had like a chain, and the security was to leave some of the spaces there in that gravel lot for the band show. But people were coming and lifting everything up, and the security, it just, it wasn't clear enough, and I think it could be solved. I don't think it's unsolvable.
Rarely do...
To get people over to that other lot and they need to walk a lot.
Rarely do we have concerts on Sunday, so, you know, the best would be for you to have your event on Sunday, for us to have our event on Saturday. You know, the really, when we went to two days was, it was really like a, really complicated, so...
I'm trying, I'm trying to, um, I'm trying, yes, I'm trying to make it become the premier event of its kind. Yes, that's one of my ambitions, but the, the other thing is, I am get, there are lots of local musicians playing, there are a lot of people who want, who wanna participate, and, and it's part of, you know, it, it's part of the, the thing, is the camaraderie of the musicians, they play with each other, they play, it's, it's kind of hard to say. But, yeah, and, and I would, I would really be happy if, if in the future, I was able to, I thought I had it worked out this year, you know, where, where we had a day that was not one that you were scheduling, and I could get into the fire department, so, you know, I was hoping that we could coordinate that this year.
Right, I mean, like, and I know that it has a lot to do with Jerry's birthday.
Yes.
But, but June's wide open. Wide open, you know, and so, but this is just, this is food for thought. Like I said, when you went to two days, that's what really, the hand came up.
That's true.
But, um...
You know, really, when it came, when it got very, very complicated was when you went to two days. Sunday's wide open.
Right. Sunday, I couldn't, I couldn't, it would be a short day, and I couldn't, we, we have a, a cutoff on Sunday that's a lot shorter than Saturday.
Right.
So, again, it's, you know, uh, for, for Sunday by itself, it's a short day, and, and... So, again, it's, you know, for, for Sunday by itself, it's a short day, and it's about forty percent of what the two is together, rather than half, even, so.
Food for thought.
Yeah. Friday is, Friday.
Friday is Sunday, whatever, but, you know, we, the first part.
Well, how often do you do the concerts?
We, we are both, all four hours.
Every weekend?
Yep. So, and that's our gig, you know, so, except for, oh, no, we're not, I'm off, it's the sixteenth, one thirty, and the thirtieth, we all, we had concerts.
And you.
But you could have, you could have done the ninth.
With the fire department.
Yeah, they took, I had originally asked for that day.
Right.
And by the time they got back to me, it was nine.
And the second, the second is also.
Yeah. And that was the one that the village asked me not to do, because.
Close to, oh, I'm.
So, they actually moved back a week, so I'm trying to fit in between everybody here.
John?
Yeah.
Look, next year, why don't you just get integrated with the recreation department's schedule and do it in the band show? I mean, we, last year, was it last year, we had an opera down there, I don't know what it was, it was maybe a hundred people, but, you know, we fit in with the rec department's schedule. You don't, you don't have to be at the Fireman's place, this conflict stinks.
Yeah.
It just makes it something difficult for us, and it's expensive as well, so, but, like I said, I'm not, I'm tired of fighting, tired of fighting.
How it would feel if we just on Saturday, at nine o'clock, the same time as Kerry Kearney? It's not a chat problem, but you'd have to figure out where the park people, I mean.
Was he starting at seven?
No, not Kerry.
Kerry's seven.
Yeah, go from one to nine, one to nine on both.
Well, Kerry's seven to nine.
Yeah.
It doesn't help us, huh?
Yeah.
The nine o'clock is irrelevant.
I think Laurie pointed out, it's, it's not a noise problem.
Well, Jerry, Jerry was very into poetry, maybe he could do poetry from seven to nine.
But nine o'clock, all the parties start leaving, all the music will die down, and the evening will be essentially over, you know?
Right. See, the problem, and I appreciate that, but the problem is at, like, seven, six thirty, when everybody's alive, their people are already there. So, gravel, gravel lots filled, you ask to have the gate open, you know, so that's all filled in the back, and so, our concert people are restricted to.
Well, there were spaces left to open, like in the gravel lot, as I reported.
Well, we'll make sure that we keep a security guard there, that, you know, we need, we need to have some space for musicians to get in and out.
Something that's been very successful is if you're on your website or whoever you.
Right.
Or on the table.
You know, if you put that coming down, the people came down Bay Avenue.
Yes.
You stop them at three eighty, at, in that area.
Definitely will work on it, because it is very much a.
Suddenly, they can park back there. If it's dry, then there's a ton of parking.
Yeah, right.
Hey, Bill, do we open up, do they park behind the field at the gravel lot?
Yeah, they do.
The, the, the space that's in the back.
Yeah, they do. Do you like the home area?
Then the, the, right center.
Yeah, they, they asked to have that opened up.
Right. So, if that's opened up, you leave this space opened up.
The north side, yeah.
Yeah, the PYA, the Little League parking lot open up.
All right, so people who come to the concerts are used to parking in the gravel lot.
Go ahead.
And up on the racetrack.
Right, the racetrack, those two spaces.
So, those will be left for that, and then these other areas can be used for.
Well, typically, the past the gravel lot hasn't been used.
But, we'll block it off.
Right. I'm hoping he doesn't get to that, I'm hoping that you can stop your people before they get south on Bay and have them park.
Yeah, but I think that we still just, if you don't put, you know, sawhorses, people are gonna just drive it.
Right, look to see the most convenient parking.
Yeah.
We'll have to test it out.
Yeah, we guys get here, the work.
We can keep it blocked off.
We have your signage.
No one, no one that shows up for mine between six and seven, everyone is there early.
Right.
So, if we keep them blocked off until six o'clock, you remove them, then there'll be virtually nobody showing up for me, they'll all be available for them. And I'll keep the security there, so we'll work that out.
And do some signage on Bay Avenue. Jerry Jam parking with an hour, and then a couple hours to shut the pathway out, because the parents, they can follow through.
Oh, to the, to the back?
To the back.
Yeah, that's the one thing a lot of people don't understand, you know, local people know the way, but if you're not local.
We, we.
You put a map on the sign, you know, just a little, you are here.
We.
Yeah, I'll put, I'll put the word out, definitely.
Typically, we haven't used that at night unless you like it. And I don't know if you wanna do that, just have to come back out to Bay and walk down. Because otherwise, you're talking about where it cuts between the pond.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right, yeah.
No, I would just have to come back out to the street, just through the street.
Need a lifeguard.
You are here.
Walk down, yeah.
It's not that far.
We have done that in the past, but we've got the floodlights.
Right, yeah, okay, so I've seen that.
Yeah.
The parking on, on the street to the, to the east, most of the, last year, I went to see what was going on in the houses over there, and many of them were not often parked.
They, they can park over Bay Avenue or something.
Yeah, it's a town, park where people.
Yeah, East Bay Avenue is working down.
But, see, my point is, is to get them before they get to you.
Right.
And so, will you advertise that on your website?
I will, I definitely will, I'll get the word out. I'll definitely get the word out.
And you will shut down on time?
I will shut down on time.
It's eleven o'clock. Everybody still comfortable with eleven o'clock in time for Saturday?
What is, what is the?
It won't go to eleven. It, it, my, my, my hope is to ten twenty, you know, would be like the end of time, you know?
We play a song at ten, it's the one that I'm playing before you.
Well, that's the problem, it's one song, it's forty-five minutes. We run into that issue with that music, and that's why the people like it, because it is, each song is a journey, so.
Is it ever?
So, so, yeah, so, the thing is, is that.